We're here with Jovia Raddix, candidate for the 45th City Council District. And you're meeting with the 32nd Street Block Association and the 31st Street Block Association. The 32nd Street is called Tilder, between Tilden and Snider.
Hello.
Wonderful.
Super.
Hello, everyone. How are you?
Fine.
Can you, you probably can just see me. I don't know if you can see everybody.
Yes, I can only see you.
You can, okay. They're here. So, thank you so much for joining us. We really appreciate you taking the time tonight. We know how busy you are, and we really respect all the work you've done for the district, and to really put your heart into it and put yourself out there to represent us. So, we're really, really grateful for you meeting with us tonight.
Well, thank you for accommodating me. I'm sorry that this has to be via Skype. My little sister actually graduated from Harvard University School of Medicine today. So, I had to be here to support her. It was a great accomplishment for her and our family, so I just needed to be here for that. So, I thought, thank you so much for accommodating me as I make my journey back to New York after the graduation.
You're welcome, and congratulations to your sister. That's a big accomplishment.
Thank you.
It's great that you're there with your family. That's important.
Yes.
Super. Can everybody hear her okay?
Yes.
I feel like everybody's here. I'm so here. So, we have here the president of our two block associations. Can you, Marjorie, can you get in there? Can you see Marjorie?
Can you see me?
Yes, I can. Hi, Marjorie. How are you?
I'm very well, thank you.
And this is Trevor, the president of the 31st Street Block Association.
Hello, Trevor.
Hi.
Gabby is our vice president.
Hello.
And we also have some other folks here. Zenobia, who's one of our big planters, is really, really helping us make the neighborhood green. So, the first thing that we'd like is if you could just take two minutes and tell us a little bit about yourself and your background.
So, my name is Jovia Raddix. I am a candidate for City Council in the 45th District. I'm an attorney from Flatbush, Brooklyn. I hold a bachelor's degree from the University of Pittsburgh in political science, a master's degree from Long Island University's Brooklyn campus, and a law degree from Hofstra University School of Law. I am public school educated. I was educated in our district, Meyer Levin Junior High School, to be exact. And I have been in this district my entire life. It really is my lifeblood. It is one of the most important places to me because it nurtured me into who I am today. And for that, I'm very grateful. I'm always aware that to whom much is given, much is required. And because this district has given me everything, I have made it my business to want to serve this district in any capacity that I can. I have served as the Brooklyn Regional Director for the Governor of the State of New York under the current governor. I have also served as the head of Brooklyn's Democratic County for two years. And I've practiced housing law for a short stint as I was coming out of law school. And most recently, I have worked as a vice president of legislation for a consulting firm, where I wrote, interpreted, and read legislation for our...
We just, you broke up a little bit there, but you were part of a, you were part of a team writing legislation. Is that correct?
Yes. That was, that was my last job before I went to the council. Was, I was a vice president of legislation at a firm, and I wrote, read, and interpreted legislation.
We're gonna have a tough time here.
Yes.
And what, what type of legislation?
Because it cuts out you guys every time a call tries to come through for me.
Oh.
I'm trying to not disturb, so that does not happen again.
Okay. Okay, that'll help. What, legislation on what issue? Were you, what were you writing on?
So, I was working with, I worked with the Archdiocese and the United Jewish Federation as they were trying to get an exemption for houses of worship in the new Greenhouse Emissions Bill. Unfortunately for them, the way that the bill was written, although they were very dedicated to becoming greener in their buildings, it put them under the same price restraints that it put developers in high-rise buildings across the city. So, they were almost gonna go broke trying to retrofit their buildings in order to accommodate the bill in the way it was written. So, we were meeting with council people and trying to get amendments made to that particular bill, just to ensure that our houses of worship continue to function and are able to keep with their core missions.
And were you successful in that process?
We were kind of successful, but not all the way. There were some amendments made to the way that money was lent to houses of worship in the Greenhouse Emissions Bill, but they were not exempted.
But you felt that you made a difference and helped them in, at least somewhat?
Absolutely. And I felt like we brought awareness to the issue because I don't think that it was thought of when the bill was written. I think it was more of an unintended consequence. You know, more of a, as the bill was written, we really had a core mission to just make this city greener by 2050. But we needed to ensure that our houses of worship and nonprofit organizations were safe in the process.
So, I heard you say that you worked with the county Democrats. Do you consider yourself?
Sorry, you broke up. I worked with...
You, I heard you say you worked with the county Democrats. Do you consider yourself part of the democratic establishment? Or would you consider yourself more a rebel coming in? What's your relationship?
Um, I've always considered myself independent, and I continue to consider myself that. I did work for the county establishment. I worked in the office during the day-to-day. But I have always been very independent, and I think that stems from my family. In 2001, my mother ran for civil court, and she was kind of an insurgent candidate who ran against the county, and she was very successful. She actually won that race in 2001. And although I have found myself a member of that organization before, I have always been an independent thinker and an independent voice. So, although I consider myself a true, true Democrat, I don't consider myself a part of the county, I think which is clear from the fact that I am not being supported by the county in this race.
So, you would be willing to take on the establishment if need be?
Oh, absolutely. I'm taking on the establishment now.
And have you taken, have you gotten any endorsements or taken any funding from real estate, real estate businesses?
I have not taken any money from real estate businesses. We are very proud in our campaign to say that we were able to raise over $35,000 from 400 individual small donors, having taken no real estate money, no big corporation money. We really were out there with the people, and the people really believed in our vision for the 45th Council District. And, I'm sorry, what was the first, the other part of that question?
Endorsements. Did any real estate firms endorse you?
Yes. No endorsements from real estate firms. We have endorsed, we have been endorsed by Councilmember Rob Corningey. We have been endorsed by the New York Caribbean News. But no real estate endorsements, no.
Okay. So, one of the...
And we have been endorsed by the 21 by 21 Initiative. Sorry, that was a co-endorsement.
Which initiative?
21 and 21. The, they, they are an organization that is dedicated to ensuring that there are 21 women in the City Council by 2021.
Oh, cool. Awesome. Okay. So, the first question we want to ask you is about zoning. This is a district that is really encountering some big changes. What is your understanding of the current zoning situation, and what is your position on it?
So, my understanding is the current zoning situation is that we are in an R6-zoned community in most of our sections of the district, especially New York Avenue and the blocks coming over on 31st Street and 32nd Street, which I'm sure you all are very familiar. My position is that it needs to be downzoned to at least an R2 or an R3, where we're talking two-family homes or three-family homes, but not giving the ability for there to be a home, and then a seven-story building, and then another home. As I drove down New York Avenue the other day, I really feel like we are transforming the landscape of our community, and not in a good way. And I, we have to ensure that we continue to... I even with "Do Not Disturb," it won't shut off. But we have to ensure that we are allowed, we are asking developers to be responsible in where they place these buildings, so that we have the opportunity to stay in the communities that we've built. And the problem is that with a lot of these buildings that are going up in these zones, we cannot afford to live in them. So, just serve to push out the members of our community that have been here for quite some time.
And I'm sure that you're a supporter of affordable housing as well.
Absolutely, as long as we can afford it.
And so, and specifically, what would you do to try to implement that, you know, more reasonable development approach?
Well, I know that as a City Council person, the developers have to come through me in a U-LAR process. And it is my job to ensure that when we start talking about the AMIs, we're speaking about the AMIs of our district and not the AMIs of the city. We're speaking about what are, the AMI for the City of New York is $94,000 a year. The AMI for the 45th Council District is $58,000 a year. There is a large disparity there. So, when we talk about affordable housing, based on the AMI of the city, it is almost impossible for us to be, to continue to live there if the apartments go up, and those are the regulations.
So, one of your priorities would be to work with the community and make sure that the community is involved in that process, educating the community and doing outreach?
Absolutely, and out, and more than just outreach. But town halls, where the developers that want to build in our community have to come and meet the members of the community, meet the people that have lived in this community for many, many years, and understand what is important to them and what's important to the fabric of our community. I am dedicated as a councilperson to ensuring that we have monthly town hall meetings in every section of the district. Our district is very large and very diverse. I want everyone to feel that they are invited and that they can, they can always make it to the meeting. But also, I want to ensure that myself and my staff do the same things that we do to get elected, to get the word out about these, these town hall meetings, which means standing on the corner, standing at the train stations in the morning, handing out flyers, going to businesses and getting these flyers posted, just to ensure that our constituents know that these meetings are happening so that they can be there and have a voice.
Do you feel that you have an advantage as an attorney in doing this work with the developers and with the zoning?
Um, I think my advantage is that I've worked in this, in government for quite some time. And I've worked in and around, in and around conversations and firms where I, where I had a seat at that table to see what that looked like, to see what the negotiation looked like, to know what the difference is between the AMI of the city and the AMI of our district. And I think that puts me at an advantage, not necessarily being an attorney in that, in this way. Of course, I do feel that my legal background gives me, and it gives me a knowledge that will be to my benefit when I'm negotiating. But I don't know if it's just the advantage. I feel that the advantage is more my experience than just the degree.
Great. Thank you so much for all of that. It's very informational and helpful for us. I'm gonna pivot now and talk about greening and litter. One of the things that we do in our, in our block association is plant a lot of trees and flowers. We've received awards. We got the first sustainability award ever given in Brooklyn to our block, to Tilder.
Congratulations.
And we've received thanks, quite a few other awards. We want to know specifically what you will do to help us spread greenery throughout the entire district.
Absolutely. So, especially with the Greenhouse Emissions Bill happening, I think we have to continue to encourage our neighbors to be greener. We have to work with sanitation to work on just our overall quality of life as far as pickups are concerned and street cleanings. We, very early in our campaign, started doing videos about sanitation and quality of life in our district because it's one thing that we hear not only from our residents, but also from our commercial strips about how garbage is picked up and not picked up enough and adequately. So, that's one. As far as greening, I want to encourage all block associations to be like yours, to continue to build, to continue to greenify their block, and continue to add greenery there. We have great community gardens in the district as well. Over on the Flatland side, I want to continue to support them. I have individually donated to the community garden close to me to ensure that they continue to be able to grow and make that a bigger and more beautiful space. And I want to encourage that, not only for the greenery, but also to teach our children healthy eating. Because with a lot of those community gardens, there are fruits and vegetables sometimes planted, and I want them to understand that as well, cultivating their own food and how that works as far as organic, organic food.
So, I'm gonna just ask you two specific things. We had tried to get garbage cans, more cans on our main thoroughfares, and sanitation refused to do that. We had quite, we had several people in our, in our block association who tried. So, would you help us in that process in negotiating with sanitation? And then, so let's just start with that one.
Absolutely. We have actually also been trying to do that on my block. I'm on 49th between J and K. And we've been fighting also for more receptacles on the Avenue J sections because, you know, if you, we have a lot of dogs on the block, and if you walk the dog, you could be walking until you walk home to put the garbage in the garbage. So, what ends up happening is people will walk for a certain time, don't see it, and just drop it. And we don't have alternate side of the street cleaning either, so we, we clean up our own sections of the district. So, we work very hard to keep it clean. So, we've asked for that as well, and I absolutely would fight with you for that because I know what that's like.
Super. And then, one suggestion that came up tonight in the forum was an organization of block associations collectively working to, you know, to get the district more green. Is that something that you would help facilitate?
I think that would be great because I think that block associations can learn from other block associations. I think there are block associations that may want to be greener, but don't know how. And I think a coalition allows for blocks like yours, who have won awards for it, to teach others how to do it as well, and that can be quite beneficial.
And we're wondering if some of the businesses can get a little pressure. We have not been able to get the businesses to cooperate in keeping their storefronts clean. So, we were even saying we need help getting like a business improvement district to try to get some of these things improved.
I, I think too, some of the businesses actually agree with you on the business improvement district. I know, speaking to some of the merchants on Avenue D, they have actually been saying that they, they would like better pickups because what they find is that people know that they pay for sanitation pickups on their block, so they drop the garbage in front of the block on different days in hoping that the garbage will be picked up by their sanitation people. So, they have also been complaining a lot about the illegal dumping in front of their businesses and how it makes their businesses look like they don't care for them, so people don't want to come in. So, it actually is something that they are struggling with as well, and I think that's why it's so important to have these conversations because I do think that they would agree and want to work with you on that.
That's great. And I did notice that you were the only candidate that I saw that actually mentioned sanitation in your flyers and in your material. So, I know it is one of your priorities.
Yes, absolutely.
Really glad to see that. So...
Thank you.
We're gonna move on now to the public transportation. I think all of us are really aware that the subway has a lot of problems. We've had delays, overcrowding, rats on the platform, homeless people taking over the cars. The buses have been not updated in terms of, you know, schedule, new bus routes that really accommodate the new neighborhoods and the way that people are traveling now, buses that run in clumps instead of on schedule. What are your solutions specifically for the subway and bus issues?
So, the first for me, I would love to know where the state is putting the congestion pricing money because we in the 45th District are in a transit desert. And as long as we have to pay for the improvement of Senate, of, of public transportation throughout the city, some of that money should come directly back to us as well. I would like to fight for some of that money to come here, to work on better bus lines, to work on better, better transportation just overall for our district, and even think about extending our train lines further out into the district to make it more accessible. I live on the Flatlands end of the district. We have to take two buses and a, two buses to get to the two train, and one long bus ride up Utica Avenue to get to the four train, and that is on a good day. So, we have to work harder to ensure, A, that the buses come on time, and B, that we are ensuring that they're, they're accessible for all of our, all of our citizens, whether they be seniors or young children. The other thing that I truly believe in, when it, sorry?
I'm just, so, we, I think we really, I think we all agree on what needs to be done. But I think the question is, what is, what can you as our City Council rep do to really bring those changes, you know, into, you know, fruition? What can be done to make the MTA more accountable? Like, you know, I know, I wonder as a, as a subway rider, are they, like, I see those crews like relaxing all the time, you know? And I've even had people who work for the MTA tell me that they take their time when they're making those repairs because they're trying to get the overtime, you know? So, I think the question is really, what kind of accountability is going on with the MTA with these improvements? And can you, as a City Council person, what's your strategy for getting in there and, and really getting improvements?
I think as a City Council person, my strategy, A, is to get on a committee where I could call hearings, like the Transportation Committee, where I can actually call a hearing to look into oversight of what is going on in the MTA. I think our biggest issue with the MTA is that no one is to blame for the MTA. The mayor says it's the governor, the governor says it's the mayor, the city says it's the state, the state says it's us. And no one ever knows where we are when it comes to the MTA. And I think that's the most frustrating thing for me about our transit system. So, to be completely honest, outside of looking for oversight and working to figure out, A, when the bus routes are about to change in our district and working to ensure that that does not happen, like the B-82, when it moved from Flatlands to Avenue K on the select line, I am not sure what else we do as councilpeople because no one actually seems to know who runs the MTA. We would have to work directly with the MTA and the new people at the MTA that are trying to change our system to try to make it better for us and more efficient. But I would start with hearings in the council to get some oversight as to what is happening in our district with the MTA.
And have meetings with us so we could let you know, like, specific problems? If it's homelessness or even like the announcements that are just, like, almost torture us to hear those constant announcements, like really taking input from us about what some of the problems are?
Absolutely. And I've also actually, in one of the previous forums, I proposed coming up with a program that allows some of the homeless on... Sorry. Homeless on this, work for the MTA. And work for the MTA in that we complain all the time that the trains are not clean. And we complain that some of that has to do with the fact that we have many homeless people living on the trains. And sometimes people are living there for mental health reasons, but there are other times when they're living there just because they cannot find... And I think as a city to be responsible, citizens, we should change about training programs that teach them how to, how to clean those subways and add to our subway cleaning workforce and earn, earn a wage that can get them some sort of housing. And that's a proposal that I came up with at one of the forums because I truly believe that we have to do something different and creative when it comes to our MTA.
Great. It's really great to hear that you're trying to think outside the box and think comprehensively about those solutions.
Thank you.
So, I'm an election security journalist, and I want to ask you a couple of questions about the Board of Elections. The Board of Elections, the Board of Elections is incompetent. They've been, they've shown that they have a hard time even running a basic election. We've had elections like in 2018 where wet ballots went into the machines and we had chaos. They've also shown themselves to be corrupt, where you had hundreds of thousands of voters purged here in Brooklyn, sometimes certain districts targeted. So, they seem to run without much oversight. The members of the Board of Elections are appointed by the Democratic and Republican Parties, and it's very hard to hold them accountable. In addition, they're in the process now of procuring very expensive voting equipment, which security experts have said is potentially a very risky, equipment that is, potentially has some very bad security flaws. So, what would you do specifically to hold the Board of Elections more accountable, make that organization more transparent, more competent, and more secure?
My belief with the Board of Elections, and I've always said this, is that there needs to be a citizen board outside of those appointed by the party that overlooks the elections. Because during elections in this city, some of the things that happen in and around the Board of Elections and are allowed inside of election polling sites and things of that nature are just devastating to our system and devastating to the trust of the people. And when people begin to feel that their votes aren't real, they stop voting, and that would be the biggest issue. I have seen in our Board of Elections, people stay there for years and years and years based on whoever is in charge of the Democratic Party at the time. And I believe that there should be, A, time limits on how long people can stay in positions of power at the Board of Elections, continue to move forward, continue to get fresh ideas in the board. And in order to do that, we need to put some sort of time limitations on who is there. And I also believe that there needs to be an independent person appointing some people to the board. One, one person from the Democratic Party, one from the Republican Party, great, and one person elected by the community to oversee as well. That way, that if there is a tie, there's one person who the community put there to change things. And that is my honest belief when it comes to the Board of Elections. If the Board of Elections runs votes, why can't it be dealt with by votes? We should have someone in there that is put in by the people.
I agree with you. It's actually very tricky because of the New York State Constitution, which requires that anything that is, any group that handles ballots or runs the elections has to be done in a bipartisan way. And so, the Constitution seems to indicate that it always has to be exactly an equal number of the last two parties from the election. So, it may be tricky constitutionally, but as an attorney, you may be able to figure out, you know, solutions to that if there's ways to, you know, to work around that, as you're saying, to get more of an independent voice or to get term limits or something else to get fresh blood in there.
Yeah, because I think, for me, my argument as an attorney would be, what is more bipartisan than someone elected by a majority of the people and not a majority of the Democratic people, a majority of the people in a general election? That is what we consider bipartisan as it is in this city. So, what is more bipartisan than having a third person who is just completely outside of the political realm and just a person of the people?
Right. I'm not sure it would stand up to the Constitution because the language in the Constitution is very specific. But it does sound like you're at least interested in bringing some ideas and some energy to that, which is great to hear.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I'm gonna see if there's any questions from our audience. Bert, Jovia?
I have a question. The New York City subway station. We ask, we need to use the subway and have access. Now, I'm speaking to you. Want to use the subway? The restrooms are just closed. You have, I'm not speaking to my set. You have younger kids who may need to go to the restroom. But what's the purpose of them closing it, but yet a young kid about six or seven years old need to use it? But the mother or father get a ticket in the unit on the subway station. What could you do to help us get back to those restrooms for the community?
I think that kind of ties in with my idea of people being able to clean the subways. We get a lot of complaints from the MTA that the reason that they are closed is because they can't seem to keep them clean. But if we're hiring people to clean them, then we can alleviate that. I also would suggest what I have seen in other countries. I saw this in Vienna, and it actually worked quite well. People pay a deposit, like 25 cents, to open the bathroom door. And once that door is, once they come out of the bathroom, that deposit is then returned to them, which would allow people then to use the bathroom, having paid their deposit. It's like the carts at the supermarket. You pay 25 cents, you use the cart, you put it back in, and the, and the cart comes out. I think we should look into those systems as well, or even look into systems where we do a 25 or 50 cent deposit to use the bathroom, and the revenue generated from there pays the person that cleans the bathroom. So, those are my thoughts about, about the, about the MTA bathrooms because a lot, usually what you hear is that they are closed because they cannot seem to keep them clean or sanitary or, or keep homeless from, from living in them. But I think we have to think of creative ways to keep the bathrooms open because not only children, but seniors usually have the propensity to need bathrooms more often, and we have to figure out better ways to make that happen.
Great. Those are great suggestions. More questions?
I have one more. Infrastructure.
Another one. Trevor's on a roar.
I mean, New York City has given so much money to infrastructure, but yet we pass, as not that last night, as not that thing on subway and New York Avenue and the country. We still have these terrible potholes as drivers, you know, and it's very scary, especially at night. So, what are they doing with the money that been funded by the state, the infrastructure projects?
Jovia, did you hear that?
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? No, no.
Yeah, so, the basic question is, we have a lot of money coming in for infrastructure, but we don't seem to be seeing the improvements in the district. You know, streets with huge potholes and, you know, the streets that are torn up and basic problems with infrastructure. Is there anything as a councilperson that you can do to address that?
Absolutely. We can work with the department, with the DOT, to ensure that these streets, when you guys have potholes, that you can contact my office, speak to my staff, and let us know where they are so that we can get on them to ensure that they are filled. And we can get on them to ensure that things get done at a faster rate. I know we have water main breaks in the district that we have been dealing with for months, and we have been trying. And it's unfair that the, the water main break at the city is called and the, the residents of that block then have to figure out a way to pay for that water main break. And that's unacceptable in our city. that water main break. And that's unacceptable in our city, especially with a $92 billion budget. There has to be money in there somewhere for that to come from the city and not from the residents, especially with property taxes continuing to increase. But it really is about having an advocate in the office who can get on the phone and call those agencies and continue to say to them, "Look, I have a pothole in this block that's tearing up people's tires. It has to be fixed. We have bumpy roads on these blocks that continue to tear up people's cars or the buses, and we have to deal with them. Our pedestrians are falling in holes on the street." And that comes from partnerships with the community and speaking to groups like you who can tell us where they are, so that we can put pressure on the city agencies to move things forward.
So the last thing I'd just like to ask you, we've talked to a lot of the candidates tonight, and in some ways, many of the candidates have the same positions. You know, everybody is saying they're gonna fight against the upzoning and help with community engagement, and we all agree the subway needs repairs. What is it about you that you think is gonna make you the best person of everybody, anybody else who's running, to represent us and work with us to bring, you know, the, the, our vision to life here in the 45th District?
I can't speak for my other candidates, but I can, I can tell you that you get what you, you get what you see with me. I am who I am, and I, when I tell you that I will always be there, good, bad, or indifferent, I will always be there. And I know what it is to be on opposite sides of an argument, even with people that you agree with, but I never leave. I will always stay there with you, even if what you, you do not agree with what I'm doing. I will have that conversation with you. I will have that dialogue, and we will come to some sort of happy medium. I also have been in government long enough that I know the players, and I know how the system works. And I've worked in state government, I have worked in city government, and I have worked in and around city government for quite some time. And I know how the system works. I have been through it for quite some time, and I know where I'm going on day one. I am not going to City Hall to figure out where the budget office is. I know where the budget office is. And I think that sets me apart on some of the folks that I work with, that I have been a voice at the table for many of these things, from interfaith hospital closing while I was at the governor's office, to CCC's affordable housing, housing units now, as they're, as they're beginning to fill them. I have been the voice for our community at the table for quite some time, in the background, without any of the fan fear, just ensuring that I get the work done, and that's what I want to continue to do.
Really excited to hear that. Give me one sec. Any more questions? Anybody else? We're all good here, and once again, we just really wanted to say thank you so very much for taking the time to meet with us, and congratulations to your sister. That's really exciting.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. It was great meeting you.
Okay, good night.
Good night.